Good morning, welcome to a regular meeting of Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is March tenth, two thousand twenty. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. If anyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your Grace is the heavenly Father. Thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We watch, we want you, we would appreciate it if you watched over and guided us through the business of this court in Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're gonna skip down to item number seven. Judge Stover, you wanna come on up?
Yes, thank you very much, Judge.
Judge Stover's gonna recognize former Sheriff, retired Billy Payne. Retired Sheriff Billy Payne, and he's now retired again.
I was, I was teasing Billy today. It, it seems like my mother just had her eighty-ninth birthday. It took three parties. We had to have a party for her birthday, a party when my brother came in, and then another party with somebody else. We had a wonderful, wonderful presentation last, last month where Congressman Madden and others came and presented Billy with a number of mementos. He said, apparently I got it wrong in one of my presentations. I said it worked for me thirty-two years. Of course, that's impossible. It's only eighteen. So, I've got a new certificate of retirement for Billy along with a keychain from the Commissioners' Court. And I'd like to recognize Billy once again for all, all the years that he served Harden County. And it's, it's kinda interesting, I guess, we got three of the four living sheriffs here in the room today. We got current Sheriff Mark Davis, we got Mike Holesapple, who was a former sheriff, and Billy, who preceded him. I guess Ed's the only one having fun. Anyway, Billy, in violation of CDC protocol, I'm gonna shake his hand. Wish you congratulations. Here, here we go. Let's get a picture here. And one last memento, since you won't be around to buy any more Christmas candy or any other of the stuff at the ladies' cellar right here, I'm gonna give you one last. You gonna let him?
Yes, sir, we'd like to hear from you.
They pull a leak.
Well, he's coming back, he says, we'll see.
Yeah, we told him he couldn't speak, so he, he left.
Okay.
Billy, did you wanna say something?
Yes.
No, I guess, well, I'm sorta lost for words, but I, I assure you, it's not a day that I spent over here that it wasn't a pleasure working for the people of Harden County. I, I tell you, I've always enjoyed it. You always, I'm fixing to turn eighty-three in just a few days, and it's never been a day that I haven't enjoyed serving the people of Harden County.
Well, Sheriff, we appreciate all of the service that you've given to Harden County, and I've only gotten to see a portion of that because I haven't been here nearly as long as you and, and so many others in this room. But on behalf of the citizens of Harden County, thank you for your many years of service. I think the total number is about thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. That's a long time, and on behalf of all the citizens of Harden County and the Commissioners' Court, we thank you, and if any of the Commissioners would like to say anything, please do.
Thank you.
Sheriff Holesapple, did you wanna say anything?
I'm just, just proud to have worked for Billy Payne. He put me in business in this county, and I appreciate it, and I learned a lot in my work for him, and I'm proud to see you get a good retirement.
We are too. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll move back to, we'll wait, now let everybody leave. We'll move back up to item number three, approved minutes of the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty regular meeting that were presented to us by Glenda Austin County Clerk. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, signed by Commissioner Phelan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims for February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of eight hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. On our cash report and general checking, we have fifteen million, three hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty cents. In tax pool, we have four million, two hundred two thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seven cents for a total in cash funds of nineteen million, five hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred one dollars and sixty-seven cents. In tax pool, for the month of February, we earned five thousand, three hundred five dollars and thirteen cents in interest.
We'll go through. Second, have motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The expenditures on February the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth were seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Expenditures on March the fifth, fourth through the fifth, were ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. Expenditures for Commissioners' Court today are four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. The total expenditures and transfers are one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. The gross payroll for March the twelfth is five hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents, and the total transfers for that payroll is six hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
May I just pay the county bill?
Second, have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible action regarding amendments and transfers to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget as presented by Angela Gore.
Okay, the budget transfers for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, in the general fund, we have two, going to the salaries of the subcourt reporters and the three fifty-six district judges, and coming from the salaries of the court reporters and three fifty-six district judge is an amount of two thousand four hundred dollars. Going to the salaries of the temporary position in the eighty-eighth district judge, and coming from the salaries of the subreporter, court reporters and the eighty-eighth district judge in the amount of seven hundred fifty-six dollars. Going to the salaries in the part-time position in the county attorney's office in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Going to the FICA taxes in the amount of one hundred fifty-five dollars, and to the retirement, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and it's coming from the salaries in the county attorney's office in the assistance position in the amount of two thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Going to the salaries in the clerical position in the district attorney's office by nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Going to the retirement for one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Going to the state unemployment tax for four dollars. Going to the dental insurance for two fifty-seven, and all, and that's coming from the FICA taxes by eight hundred dollars, and the health insurance by five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Going to the workers' comp insurance and the maintenance department, and coming from the FICA taxes in the amount of five hundred and five dollars. Going to the miscellaneous expenses in the constable precinct two, and coming from the FICA taxes in the amount of twenty-six dollars. Going to the sheriff's dispatcher's salaries in the amount of four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Going to the salaries in the L E overtime in the amount of nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars. Going to the dental insurance by five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and all that's coming from the salaries in the deputy's position in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven. Going to the salaries in the jail nurse, and coming from the salaries in the corrections is two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Going to the prisoner phone, food, excuse me, the prisoner food, twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Prisoner medical, thirty-six thousand, five fifty. Health insurance, coming from health insurance, eighteen thousand, two ninety-three. Salaries correction, ten thousand, three eighty-eight, I'm at sixteen thousand, excuse me. Jail supplies, ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight, and prisoner transfers, three thousand, one twenty-nine. Vehicle maintenance, one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Going to the dental insurance and juvenile detention, coming from FICA taxes in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Going to the health insurance, health department, three thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. To the dental insurance, ninety-four dollars. Life insurance, fourteen, and it's coming from the salaries of the director position in three thousand, five hundred and five dollars. We move to the road and bridge fund. Going to the salaries in the temporary position of road and bridge one, ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Going to dental insurance, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, coming from the salary precinct employees line item in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Going to contract labor, coming from materials and supplies in the amount of thirteen thousand, one fifty-four. Going to the salary precinct employees in road and bridge two is thirteen thousand, four hundred and one. Going to retirements, two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. Going to supplemental debt is twenty-three. Coming from the salaries in the temporary position of two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Salaries in part-time, nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. FICA, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Workers' comp, forty-four dollars. State unemployment tax, eighteen dollars, and travel and training, three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Going to vehicle equipment maintenance, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, coming from the equipment expense in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Going to equipment purchase, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, and coming from materials and supplies in about that amount. Salary clerical, road and bridge three, and going to that line item in the amount of twenty-five dollars. Going to salaries and precinct employees for forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Going to FICA, one thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Going to retirement, five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Going to workers' comp, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. State unemployment tax, thirty dollars. Supplemental debt, eighty-six dollars. This coming from salaries in the temporary position of ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Dental insurance, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Life insurance, thirty-seven dollars. Vehicle equipment maintenance, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And contract labor, twelve thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Going to materials and supplies, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, coming from equipment expense by that amount. The salaries in the clerical and road and bridge four, going to that line item for two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Salaries precinct employees, eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. Retirement, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Supplemental debt, fifteen. It's coming from salaries in the temporary position of eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. FICA taxes, taxes, three hundred and forty dollars. Workers' comp, two hundred and twelve dollars. Uniform, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. In the jury fund, going to the pauper attorneys, the adult and the jury eighty-eighth court, ten thousand, nineteen dollars. The petty jury, coming from the petty jury in six thousand, eighty-two dollars, and the pauper attorney juvenile, three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's the end of the budget transfers, and for the budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, we have the county preservation fund. We're increasing the revenue and the county clerk's preservation fee by twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The revenue for the county clerk archi, archi, copy, nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then, we're increasing the expenditure side by the health insurance, four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. The book repairs, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. In the general fund, the budget amendments are two, the FICA tax, election expenses, sixty dollars. The retirement, five hundred and three dollars. State unemployment tax, six dollars. Supplemental debt, nine dollars. Salary in the election workers is coming from five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Going to the district clerk, E file expenditures at six thousand, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, and that's coming from the general fund contingency of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. The revenue for the tropical storm Amelda, the local match, is twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents, and that's coming from the general fund contingency line item, and that's in the amount of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-nine cents. The revenue and the county clerk's fee increase at about twenty-five thousand, seventy-two dollars. Miscellaneous revenue, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Interest earned, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Penalty and interest, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. And those revenues will offset the following expenditures. The health insurance of J P Five's office, eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Miscellaneous expense and election expenditures, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Jail maintenance and repairs, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. Hospital inpatient and the injured care department, fifty thousand, nine fifty-nine. Hospital outpatient and the injured care department, sixty-five thousand, four forty-one. Miscellaneous expenses in the airport, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Autopsies, eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Insurance general, general liability, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Miscellaneous expense, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. The salaries in the temporary position for the D A, five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The salaries part-time purchasing, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The following budget amendments for road and bridge is the revenue donation, road and bridge one, for a thousand dollars, and offset the expenditure line item, supplies donated funds for a thousand. The jury fund, two, the pauper attorney, adult jury eighty-eight, five thousand, from the pauper attorney, adult jury, three fifty-six, five thousand. The CPS in the jury fund, two, the CPS pauper attorney, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The CPS court reporter, two thousand, one hundred dollars. The CPS bailiff, three thousand dollars. The CPS transcripts, four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's coming from the fund, general, the jury fund, fifty-three contingency in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I move to approve the numbers and transfers to fiscal year nineteen budget as presented.
Have motion by Commissioner Phelan, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, is that right?
That's right.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Gore, you did a good job. I would not have wanted to read all that.
I was trying to figure out a way to ask her not to.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, ask one question, uh, and I might be overlooking, and you might not even have it here. Uh, overall, from, since we have these budget transfers and amendments, do you have a number that went and actually went into the general fund contingency from last year's budget, overall?
Well, that would change because we're still posting general, we're still posting numbers. Journal entries, excuse me, and all these have to be posted, but it looks like, as of right now, before, like I said, we're still cleaning up the year, there may be like two hundred thousand dollars additional in contingency. Um, but that could change, so.
Uh, I wanted to make a brief comment on the paupers attorney on the last page of CPS. I think that's extremely high, but from what I understand, it's probably gonna go up.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the way things are looking.
Mm-hmm, I, I'm gonna make a comment on that just a minute.
Okay, uh, and I would like to go to the sheriff's jail. I think, looking, where was I at? I had somewhere, where was I? Food. Only going over twelve thousand dollars, I think that's good. I mean, it's hard, it's hard to budget that because you don't never know, but I, I was expecting that one to be up. And the prisoner medical work, thirty-six thousand, is that about average? I mean, from, from la, comparing last year's to, 'cause that's hard to budget as well. So, but I did wanna make that comment on the CPS paupers attorney. That's all I have, Judge.
Uh, just to follow up with Ms. Gore, are you saying that we are going to spend two hundred thousand dollars more than we took in for fiscal year nineteen?
No, right now, um, the way the general ledger looks, and like I said, we're still cleaning up.
Sure.
We had six point one million in contingency, and we have six point four right now in our general ledger, but that could change.
All right, I was thinking that was true. Uh, you know, last year we budgeted that we may go over, if I'm not mistaken, three hundred and seventy-one million is what we budgeted that we possibly could have to take out of surplus to make the fiscal year nineteen budget, and the last time Angela and I spoke, uh, she told me that not only will we not do that, we should put a little money into surplus, we hope.
Three hundred and something thousand?
We, we budgeted to take three hundred and seventy-one thousand out of surplus in order to fund the fiscal year nineteen budget. Not only will we not have to take any money out of surplus to fund that budget, we might put some back into surplus. And right now, she's saying maybe around two hundred thousand. Last time we spoke, it was one seventeen, so, uh, maybe it's going up. Maybe great, but, but maybe not. Anyway, as long as we don't take any money out to fund the budget, I'm, I'm happy about that.
It's a little too early to predict until they establish what you're supposed to.
Uh, I wanna also follow up on what Commissioner Cooper said about the expenses in the sheriff's office. The prisoner medical going over thirty-six thousand, uh, the population in the jail was a lot higher than normal last year. Is Linda still here? Linda Davis works with the sheriff on making sure that we don't pay any more than we have to for prisoner medical, and so only going over thirty-six thousand is really not bad. So, thank you, Sheriff, and Linda, for working on that as hard as you do. And then, as Commissioner Cooper pointed out, we went over a hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars in CPS budget last year. If y'all will remember, Mr. Bennett came to the court and asked us to increase that budget. If I'm not mistaken, he asked us to go up to about a hundred and thirty thousand, and we only agreed to go up to ninety thousand. Uh, that, that budget last year, fiscal year nineteen, I believe, was forty-two thousand. We increased it to ninety for fiscal year twenty. He had requested that we go to a hundred and twenty, and we did not do that. Uh, Angela called me about three weeks ago and said that that ninety thousand dollars is about gone. In fact, today it probably is gone, so I just wanna let the court know that less than halfway through the year, that budget's gone. And we have about fifty thousand left in surplus to help make that budget up, and that is a jury fund surplus. So, we may, in fact, we will probably have to take some money out of the general fund surplus to plus up that budget, just like we did today for the fiscal year nineteen. We will have to do the same thing for fiscal year twenty. Now, Matthew and I, Rebecca met and looked at a lot of those expenditures that are being turned in by the attorneys, and then Matthew and I and Judge Lockwood, who is the CPS judge, and Judge Stover met last Wednesday, and they are gonna work hard on trying to, uh, lower those expenses that are coming in from the attorneys. But the bottom line is, we used to oversee, I think, about twenty-four to twenty-seven kids in CPS, and now that number's at about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve, and there's just no way to, uh, control that. I wish there was, and so does Rebecca, so does Matt, so does Judge Stover, and so does Judge Lockwood. Uh, one thing that Rebecca and Matt came up with, and I would like to discuss this further when we get into budget workshops, but I'd like to go ahead and plant the seed now for everybody to be thinking about, and I believe actually we talked about it in our budget workshop last time, and that is a public defender's office for CPS. I think that we could save some money doing that, and Matthew and Rebecca have an excellent idea. I've already talked to Judge Thomas about it, and I intend to talk to Judge Stover about it, and I'm hoping that we could start there. And then I would like to see us, uh, poss, possibly, uh, the next year, expand that to a public defender's office for all indigent defense, including criminals, CPS, and any other indigent defense attorneys that the county has to hire and the taxpayers have to pay for on behalf of the indigent citizens of Harden County. But we'll talk about that more in detail on another day. Any other comments or questions regarding the budget transfers and amendments that were presented by the auditor? I think I talked way longer than everybody wanted me to.
No, that's good.
I thought it was important to get that information out to everybody. So, the motion was made by Commissioner Phelan and seconded by Commissioner Roberts. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number?
Eight.
Item number eight, discussion of possible action to adopt an order related to the application for issuance of solid waste disposal revenue bonds for Republic Services Incorporated and authorizing the county judge to execute certificates approving the order and public hearing. This was requested by Lee McCormick, the president of Community Development Associates. I just want to inform the court that, uh, based on some emails back and forth between I and Mr. McCormick, the Harden County landfill was not going to be included in, uh, any of the work that would come from these bonds, and was not gonna be put back online this year as we had been previously led to believe. I informed Mr. McCormick that I would not be in favor of approving this order, and at three-thirty on Friday, he asked me to pull it from the agenda. The agenda was already posted, so we couldn't pull it from the agenda, and I'm just making a recommendation to the Commissioners' Court members that we take no action on this line item.
Do you need a motion, Judge?
No, sir, I think if it just dies for lack of emotion would be the best way to handle this, that way it doesn't come back up. There's nothing further, we'll move on to item number nine. Item eight will die for lack of emotion. Item nine, authorization for county judge to sign general land office contract number two zero dash zero six six dash zero four one dash C two six six for Community Development Block Grand Disaster Recovery Program Local Acquisition Projects with a total subaward amount not to exceed three million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, and the most important part of that is no match.
No match.
So, have motion by Commissioner Phelan, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Can we get a copy of that contract?
Sure, sure, I'll, uh...
That's busy for pages.
Oh. This is not it?
Yeah.
Okay. If you don't have it, let me know, and I'll get an email to you.
Okay.
I think that's it, there.
That's pace.
Okay, we'll get that to you. Uh, do you want it printed or emailed to you?
Email.
We'll email it to you. All right, any other discussion on item number nine? How many houses is this, Amanda?
We're going to try to do twenty-eight, I believe, but, um, we don't have, this is something that we're going to have to go up and advertise to get people to sign up.
So, with this one and the last one that we approved in the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, that's a total of forty-seven or forty-eight houses altogether. But these will be acquisitions and not buyouts.
Correct.
So, these will not be a permanent green space.
Correct.
We will, we will be able to acquire them, demolish them, and sell the property.
Correct.
Great. Any other discussion on item nine? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, authorization for county judge to sign professional services agreement between Harden County and Texas Property Assess Clean Energy Authority doing business as Texas Pace Authority to establish the Harden County Pace Program. Ms. Marina?
Yes, sir.
Did you have anything you wanted to say regarding this?
Uh, no, sir, I think we went through and did the public hearing. Um, there is a resolution to be up, which I understand you all have heard well.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so this is that except for the program, and then authorize Texas-based, we need to have administrator on behalf. For the program on behalf.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We received these items to put on the agenda from this High Dean.
Yes, sir.
Was there a resolution we also needed to approve? Because I think we only approved the resolution of intent. Was there a final resolution? Did somebody else say something?
I think it was the public hearing. I think a resolution. That is something that can be done now, if it's all from a personal perspective, um, unless you, you are. Judge.
Okay, I think we will need to put this on the next agenda to approve the public, uh, the, uh, resolution because it's not on this agenda.
Okay, it was on the agenda of the public hearing.
Well, we didn't have, we didn't take any action during the public hearing, and we never take action during a public hearing, usually. It was to me like we were receiving comments on item number three. So... I will, uh, we'll, I'll talk with Ms. Walton about this after the meeting, and if we need to put this on the next agenda, we will. If we can make that resolution a part of the agreement, we'll do that. Any other discussion on item number ten? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, discussion of possible action to approve an order to abandon an undeveloped sixty-foot right-of-way called Pen Oak Lane in Timber, Timberlane Estates subdivision located in precinct one. This was requested by Casey Grimes and Walter Smith, and is placed on the agenda by Amanda Young, local plate administrator. Good morning, Ms. Young.
Good morning. Um, this is an undeveloped right-of-way that goes between two properties of Casey Grimes and Walter Smith, and they just wanted it abandoned so that it could be part of their property.
Judge, I met, that's in my precinct. I met with, uh, Mr. Grimes on a couple of occasions in regards to this. We got with the county attorney to, uh, it was her on it, everything was, uh, looked at and approved. This particular, uh, Pen Oak Lane and Timberlane Estates, none of that was ever developed, and, uh, the sixty-foot right-of-way would not be of any benefit to the county, and all the landowners involved have signed, uh, petitions, and I've talked to them, so I would move that we grant this.
Sir.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Phelan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion of possible action to correct award of bid for road and bridge material previously approved in Commissioners' Court on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and... Misty Sam's purchasing agent. Good morning, Ms. Sam.
Morning. This is regarding the concrete stabilized sand bid that we received. And if y'all remember, there was some confusion over whether it met specifications. Um, I did clarify with the vendor, and Martin Marietta, they say four sacks per ton, it doesn't exceed the cement content for five sacks per yard, which was what our specifications were. So, after some discussion with the auditor, um, I think we're recommending that we should probably switch those two awards to make Martin Marietta number one and Gulf Coast number two. There's a pretty big price difference.
I move to award the concrete stabilized sand as number one to Martin Marietta, as recommended by the purchasing agent, and number two to Gulf Coast.
Second.
Have motion by the chair and seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number thirteen, permission to solicit bids for purchase of road and bridge emulsions of track fuel oil for all road and bridge departments. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Feld, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number fourteen, permission to solicit bids for purchase of road and bridge materials of super patch, super high-performance rapid road repair, and slag coat products for all road and bridge departments.
Some more.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number fifteen, permission to solicit proposals for environmental inspection services relating to all DR four-three-three-two, which is the Harvey disaster hazard mitigation grant program projects.
Some more.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Feld, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, I just want to add that, uh, the, uh, vendor that receives that award will be paid one hundred percent by the grant. Uh, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm making sure. I said a hundred percent, is that right or no?
No.
On one grant it is, but on the HMGP grant it is not. It'd be seventy-five, twenty-five, that's right. But we covered all of that when we approved that contract in here two weeks ago. All right. Number sixteen, permission to solicit proposals for grant management services pertaining to community development block grant mitigation funds, also known as CDBG MIT.
Some more.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, this is a new CDBG grant that's coming up. I think the, uh, I think the comment period ends on April the third, and we should start receiving the, uh, information regarding the, the mitigation, uh, grant applications shortly thereafter. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This happens oft- it doesn't happen during commissioners' court, but it happens often. I think this is the first time it's happened in commissioners' court. So that's why nobody's jumping and running except the sheriff and the chief deputy.
I'm running.
Well, jumping and moving. Here in just a minute, they should say all clear and we'll go back to work, but if not, we won't. Real quick, all we have is this last item, all clear. Item seventeen, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. I wanna bring up an email that I sent out yesterday to all employees. Just wanna make sure that everybody understands why we're asking for this information. I asked all employees to let the human resources department know about their travel plans if they're planning any international travel. That is just to keep track of anybody that's gonna be leaving the country because of the, uh, concerns with the coronavirus. Uh, at some point in time in the future, it may become necessary that we ask anybody that travels, uh, overseas to self-quarantine whenever they come back home before they come back to work. I wanna make sure that that information is out there now, since it is something that we're hearing about and we're gonna be talking about that in the near future. And, uh, so it is the, the reason that we're asking to know who's traveling internationally. So that we can have that information and be readily available in case it comes to a pass that we need to, uh, send anybody for testing or ask them to self-quarantine or anything else. So, uh, that is the reason I sent the email out, I wanna make sure that nobody is panicked about that. I just wanna be proactive and make sure that we are ahead of the game should it become necessary that we take any action on, uh, testing people or anything else regarding that, uh, infectious disease. Any, uh, member of the court have any other items that they'd like to discuss? Any member of the audience have any item that they'd like to discuss?
Judge.
Come to the podium, please. Good morning, Ms. Cook.
Good morning. I, I just wanna let you know, we do have a sign in front of our door. The state has mandated that our DMV department take a massive amount of modules and they have to pass these, each one. Our clerks have over fifty, the two supervisors have ninety. This is, um, is taking a lot of time. Uh, so we are petitioning off one clerk at a time to try to get them. We had eight, one spent eight hours yesterday and they got twelve done. So I just wanna let you know, if you hear complaints that there's a line in our office, we always have a line in our office. It's not because of just the testing, but it may get a little worse. I just wanna let the court know that if it, if you hear complaints, there's nothing we can do, it is state mandated and we are on a timeline. We have to have it done by June and we're struggling.
How many hours again, Shirley, do each one of them have to have?
The clerks have fifty, the supervisors have ninety.
And Scott spent how long yesterday?
Eight hours.
And only got how many?
Twelve.
So if you do the math in your head, it appears to me that we will never meet the deadline. So we would have to do a budget amendment to her budget, or at least some overtime or something, because there's gonna have to be some Saturdays or something. We're gonna have to do something because I don't think during business hours, you're gonna be able to complete that.
I don't know how, but we did stay, I had five stay yesterday until seven, and they got, uh, three to four done in two hours. So it takes, some of the modules take thirty minutes, some of them take two hours. So we're doing the best we can, I just wanted you to know what's going on because I know that we don't know, I don't know what the solution is.
Thank you.
Hopefully the state will expand that deadline, but if they don't, we are gonna have to look at doing something to, uh, to get those, uh, employees the training that they need. Uh, Ms. Fine, I don't wanna put you on the spot, would you just relay this to the representative of the problem that we're having? And, and Ms. Cook's hearing this same problem from the area, tax assessor collectors, it's a problem in the whole area. Commissioner Feld, had something?
Uh, you say you put a sign on the door.
Well, we have a sign, we found a, uh, uh, easel this morning. We put a sign up that just to tell our, you know, expect delays, this is state mandated testing.
Okay, you got state mandated on it.
State mandated, yes, sir.
Big letters, I think.
Yes, sir. So we had signs up, smaller signs, nobody paid attention to them, so I just, I just wanted you all to be aware. We're doing the best we can, we don't know, we're gonna stay tomorrow for two hours after work tomorrow. Um, you know, it makes a long day, but we don't know how else to get it done.
Would, would you be able to tell how much costs this adds to the county?
Well, at this time, it's not because we're, we, they comp their time. Uh, we're trying to, they comped the two hours yesterday, we're just doing.
You mean the employee does?
Employee has.
But I'm talking about how much this action costs the county, or costs employees, or whoever it costs.
There's no cost to the county, it's a, a state test.
The citizens are having to take more time to get that worked.
But we're having to pay salaries for people to do this.
People would comp, they're gonna take time.
Well, we just take comp time, it's what.
It's costing the county or it's costing the employees.
That's true.
All these actions cost something.
Yes, sir.
And that's what would be interesting to kinda keep up with it.
We, we.
So like when we talk to the representative of the center, we can say this action by the state may be necessary. If it's necessary, it may the state ought to pay for it. This is how much it's costing local. That is a complaint on unfunded mandates the whole time.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of times, when I talk to them, they don't even know that this is costing the county, but it always costs, it costs somebody.
Well, it's a time, a time.
Yeah, time is, time is money.
You know, it's, it's hard to, when you have all the distractions to get this done because they have a test at the end of each one.
Well, and the public doesn't generally understand, all they see is they got a line and they're coming up here to pay money.
Right.
Or a service or license or something.
Yes, sir.
And they're having to wait long.
Yes, sir.
I wanna thank Ms. Cook and Sheriff Davis, they fed everybody the other night when the election returns were coming in, so thank y'all for doing that. And, uh, I think everybody got to eat and there weren't any leftovers and it was just right, so thank y'all very much. Shirley was worried she's gonna have to carry a bunch of trays out of here with food, but that did not hurt.
We're just glad we didn't have to stand out and hold them aside for twelve hours. You're very welcome.
Thank y'all again for that. Anybody have anything else? Move the adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.